Welcome to the budget hearing and regular meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, September 12th, 2016. We roll call Mrs. Prino.
Odom?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Marks?
Present.
Ford?
Here.
Haddaway?
Yes.
Prius?
Here, in form as present person. The agenda, we have the budget overview, which is presented by Princess Lavella, Assistant Superintendent, and CSBO. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing, followed by a roll call. Mrs. Odom?
Yes.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. We roll call Mrs. Prino.
Okay. Carroll?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Haddaway?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Prius?
Yes, in motion. Yes. Sorry. We're now in... Mrs. Lavella, thank you.
Um, so we've had a look after a while, and talked about it all, how I've not heard from anybody, so just a quick overview. You are looking at a balanced budget, which is about $170,000, which would be all funds. If you're operating a fund, you're looking at like a deficit. Again, majority is your property type revenues, general state aid, or whichever, we're going to get a hundred million dollars more than we got last year. On your management side, you're right there, including you got some back to start with, you got the next year. Unless you have any further questions, I don't want to continue. And then you can vote for, and you'll just approve it with your ready.
Okay. Are there any public comments or questions? Yes.
What is the estimated ending fund balance? I'm sorry.
This is... Sir, this is possible. Would you stand up so we can all read? Thank you.
What is the estimated ending fund balance?
You mean like, what is it? It's essentially your cash account.
Okay, so that is our surplus.
Well, it's, it is the cash bank on the surplus for this year. So it's, it's kind of like your savings account.
So we have a savings account of $29 million.
In essence.
The 800% increase in capital outlay, what are we purchasing?
That is really full of life safety items. It's the, it's the, um, the construction that has been taking place, the asbestos that was abated here, and there's a whole bunch of life safety items that were done over the summer in the outline building. There were some light replacements and those kinds of things to be compliant with, and tenure life safety services. Thanks.
Can you just remind me again where in the budget does the Title I carryover rest? And how can we address that for the balance that you plan to roll over, as well as readdressing the budget to make sure it is, there are appropriate applications to exhaust all the funds next year?
Carryover we put in, if you're going to see it, it's two sides, both the revenue and the expenditure. So it's money in from the benefits, money out to be expended for the Title I programs. Title number N, we have not seen the carryover allotment come in yet, even for us to write for it. So the current year allotment has been written for in terms of Title I needs, professional development, and other kind of supplies and materials that are needed for the title buildings. When the carryover comes in, that the administrators of the Title I building, they have to do other installations that need to be completed, then that would be written for, set back down, stable, and approved, and at that point, time to spend that.
And so what's the timing of that? Is there no possible way to spin that money this year? What's our...
Well, it should be, we're all big donors this year. And again, it'll just, when the funds are unexpended, usually it's not a great amount, but when the funds are unexpended, it rolls into the next year, and then they have the opportunity to use. They have to write for it, and the state, that's not very particular about the writing for it, so that's taken a little bit more time going back and forth, because it's probably right for them. But then it's, it's up to the administrators to actually purchase and will be implemented for the year.
Okay, so next year, we will essentially have $100,000 more.
More for those.
So have we figured out yet how that additional fund will be used? And have we figured out how to not have this problem this time next year?
I think theoretically, we will figure out what it is that needs to be purchased with, I mean, we have a brand new curriculum, Dr. Carroll has had an opportunity to sit down with even a couple of principals, and figure out what it is we need for those buildings. Once the carryover allotment comes through, with those conversations, we'll write for it, and then it's a matter of acceptance, of actually purchasing those items, of which it's not mainly that coming care for, first, because it will be that, that volume. That's, that's...
Oh, no, I, 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 I just want to make sure we don't have this problem next year. Or if there is a way midway through the year to realize, we may have a new surplus or unused funds at the end of the year, should we rethink how we want to allocate these funds versus, oh my God, we have $100,000 just in life.
Well, we have to write for it, and get specific approval from the state, and then purchase for those things that are written for, for for them.
So understood, but I'm still baffled, as you know, and this is not, give me a reflection on you, but I'm still baffled that we have a surplus of $100,000, and we haven't figured out how we're going to reduce those funds, and we haven't, we're not being, it doesn't seem like we're being proactive to make sure we don't have that problem next year. So I, somehow, I think we need to revisit this, because this is just not acceptable, that we have $100,000 for Title I, for four schools, and the reason that we talked about two weeks ago, which is, we have ones that can't use those funds, that's just not, that's just not unacceptable to use. We have enough funds to supplement whatever it is that we need happen over western half.
That's the problem, we can't.
So whatever, or just for the more...
The other four have to have more. You then can't take local funds and match it up.
Then, then we should have a way to make it, clearly, they need more, which is why we get funds in the first place. So we need to figure out a way to make sure they get more.
If I may, that's, I absolutely agree with you, Principal, and practicality, I would love to hear how we're going to come together on that. I would suggest that would be a great discussion for our next two weeks.
And that's it, too.
Too. Miss Leacock?
How much have we budgeted for teachers, for A's and teachers staff? Great question. How much? 3%. 3%. Does the increase in the termination benefits include the severance package that's being offered to our former principal, the Parker GBI?
No.
So that, that's an additional charge or cost that we will incur?
Depending on what the hire is, it may be covered in one line.
What line is that?
I mean, the salary line would still be covered.
Okay. How often is the Title I grant amended?
That depends on the year.
So there are no amendments made through the life of the grant in order to account for what Mrs. Mark was talking about?
They have to be amended, because the Title I grant has been amended multiple times in a year.
Okay. So it could be regularly amended to account for what Mrs. Mark was talking about, with expenditure. And so you wouldn't end up at the end of the year like that.
So what is the plan for Title I spending this year?
Again, I don't write the purchase line. It gets spent and written by the regular people, I pretty much write the check.
Okay. Can anyone here answer that question?
I think that might be a good discussion about two weeks.
School year started a month ago.
I'm, I'm, thank you. This is a budget hearing, so, and those are your questions, I'm not anyway minimizing the reports and questions, but just for focus of the budget hearing, I would suggest that we could speak as focused as we can.
The good is remain to the budget, massive wealth flowing spend, a lot of money on this year. I understand.
And again, this year's allotment are Title I needs, professional development, there's some equipment in there for one of the buildings, in terms of smart boards, there's some interventions that are written in, I believe, that's pretty much the bulk of this year's allotment.
Do the school require to keep things like Title I applications, you know, publicly available and so forth? I don't know why we have to ask these questions, I should just be able to...
I've never seen anyone put the Title I grant up on their website before.
And the best, you know, one, best thing we can think that's meant Title I money on is professional development, smart boards, and A's.
Are there any further questions? Okay. That, we have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
Okay. Odom?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Haddaway?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Prius?
Yes, in motion. Yes. Motion is passed, adjourned from the budget hearing. Next, we have audience comments. We need members who should be heard by the board must sign in before commencement of the meeting. Comments being made by visitors at this time regarding items not on the agenda. Visitors wishing to comment on an agenda, on the agenda, will be recognized by the Board President for consideration of that item. According to Board Policy 2230, Board President, myself, as the authorization to restrict comments by minutes for ethical reasons, legal reasons, comments or communications regarding school personnel who work in the district will not be heard in this format. During this time, during this part of the meeting, audience, sorry, audience to visitors, will be limited to 15 minutes. In this case, I see that we have nine people with any comments, and so I certainly would extend that, as it be as I think there's a lot of questions that the audience has that deserves to be addressed, and should be addressed. With that, I would say, or would ask you, that if you can make your comments as succinct as possible, and, you know, by all means, in the past, I know that some audience members have felt compelled to mention specific names of people who work for the district, I would ask you to refrain as much as possible. With that said, first, we have Dean Armstrong from Parker High School, here to talk about the president.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks again for letting students aboard. My name is Dean Armstrong, my wife Carol and I have lived in the hospital for many years. Our two daughters, they should be set up for one experience of the commandment, the trade service of Parker, so I'm saying, I'm anxious to be one of the four of the brothers. You want me to hear this? And I do want to say this as well. I'd like to, pardon?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'd like to, once again, give my very strong recommendation that I remind you, as a principal at Parker High, I will repeat the comments that I had last night, but under, under ideal circumstances, if we had a principal that had been at Parker for six, seven, eight years, that was retiring, he gave us, offered, gave us an early notice, and sent out a search team to find the ideal principal at Parker High, I don't think we would find a better candidate than Ryan Pickock. Ryan Pickock was named Outstanding Principal of the Year, State of Indiana. I see up on the board, there's a very proud banner, Mrs. Jane Herd, her very teacher for Indian Hill School, chosen as a finalist for Golden Apple Award, which is white on, and we might have more of those awards up there. The HF staff chose Ryan Pickock to be their nominee for the Principal of the Year Award by Golden Apple Society. He was a finalist for it. He would bring honor and integrity and discipline to Parker. Under the ideal circumstances, he would be the ideal hire. He's got a PhD from Indiana State University, K through 12, through administration, he's got excellent credentials, excellent leadership skills. So as I said, if you send out that search team, he would be right at the top of the list. But we don't have an ideal circumstance here. We have a leadership, we have a sister principal that's on his lawn, we've got a principal that's on the lawn, and I don't remember the name of the lady, but the lady stood up from over here, she has three kids at Parker, she talked about, please do something, do something now, because this is my child, it's children's, one opportunity, or a good experience at Parker High. So there is tremendous urgency for the budget meeting. He's got qualifications to do, he's got a character to do, and I'm saying, my two daughters have not been well, except out there, they should be one of the public service. My, my district's end of the system, the community's benefit, I'm not great friends with Ryan Pickock, we don't hang out together, he's just done a great job at HF, helping my daughters, so we share common goals, common ideas. He believes, strongly believes, he believes in discipline, he believes in leading by example, he believes bringing the roots together, he believes, like I do, in the very core of my being, that diversity is a strength, that if you hold up the lines and channels of communication, you're going to be five to the school, and five to the community, amazing things can get, amazing things can get at Parker. We need Ryan Pickock's leadership, we need Ryan Pickock's energy, we need Ryan Pickock's experience, we need Ryan Pickock to help us spread him out, this leadership. School season, we need him as a community, most importantly, for that age of over learning for students, the students need him to change, to move now. Where else are we going to get such a qualified leader to get from the beginning of school here? I ask the prince of the bottom, at my heart, the bottom of the earth, I want you to next to Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Next on the agenda, we have Mark Matthews to discuss initiative technology. Mr. Matthews?
First of all, I'm on the street tonight, I'm Mark Matthews, I have two daughters at Parker High, I'm here tonight to speak about the safety technology in our district. Instead of using technology to create time and cost savings, which is simply inefficient and effective communications, this district has made technology choices that do exactly the opposite of this. It's hard to know if the administration is even aware of the technology choices made there, if they're actually doing a good job, so it leads to student safety and parents. They continue to use of tools such as E-CHALK, I believe, are largely responsible for the erosion of homeschooling in this district. As the parents are receiving mandatory communication from the district, it appears that updating content on E-CHALK is difficult, time-consuming, and error-prone. Otherwise, I can't explain incorrectly how the data information related to my students' education is published in our district's school records. We started this school with any changes. None of these, of these changes for students, were changes to policies concerning up-level mandate at Parker, whether they'll receive credit for it at HF, changes to the entrance exam, the SATs for our eighth graders, and the refreshing of the E-CHALK. These changes have not been fully explained to parents. None of this information was up-to-date on Parker website at the beginning of school, and it's still out of date or absent altogether tonight. Even in the wake of the leadership changes at Parker, someone should have been able to keep this information up-to-date, even if it was the superintendent or his staff. I take these concerns to the superintendent, and his response was, these education we're working on, which, as we know tonight right now, means they've changed what they should say, updated links, information helps. I do have patients, but I honestly don't believe that students, if the staff isn't working fast or hard enough to maintain this information. My theory is that the technology is getting in a way of getting E-CHALK done. In addition to being an information radiator for the district, we have systems like E-CHALK that replace this, a notebook that students can use to record their assignments, and in some cases, replace or augment textbooks and worksheets. From a parent's point of view, E-CHALK has never been an effective replacement for this system. Even in the district, they have a version of E-CHALK with a learning management system called, not all teachers in the district are using it. I'm not sure this year whether we purchased the LMS functionality or not, or just not using it. My suspicion is we didn't purchase it, because when I ignore the staff only signing on the E-CHALK login at the top of the webpage, we find kids' credentials to log in, I provided a dashboard that does not have the assignment logo there for the last year. Instead, this year, teachers are left on their own to figure out how to build a learning management system on top of the open-ended content management system E-CHALK provides, which is the wrong tool for the job. We're wasting teachers' time by requiring them to recreate the content they had in system last year, implement the missing assignment logo functionality over and over again for every classroom in the district. I'm sure this time, we'll put together a useful. What this decision means for parents is that every class has a slightly different E-CHALK page, so this there, student assignments are other than you, in different ways, in different places on every page. Compared to looking at one place, trust you'll decide that they'll work. If you're a student or a parent, you have to check each individual teacher's page to find out what is due there. If, like me, you're lucky enough to have multiple students at Parker, and you want to see what they're working on, what they're learning today, you have to check 12 webpages that may or may not have these assignments, may or may not have the class materials, may or may not have the online textbooks, in some cases, you even need to remember what period they take what section. That's not obvious. Teaching students how to be accountable for their daily tasks is made more difficult by replacing something simple like this, a notebook, for the system we have today that is vastly more complex and complicated. This is simply the result of choosing the wrong product for the job and trying to bend it into something it's not. As much as the district would like to think so, they are not preparing our children for life to 21st century. There is yet to be invented an electronic system that effectively replaces the simple pen and paper assignment. It's why our students are using HF, it's why our students are using college, as a tool of choice in my professional circles as a software engineer, that will be a 21st century job. Any skills that one learns in managing their work with a pen and paper can easily be translated to electronic form. The reverse is not true, and even if the board has systems that look nothing like it, it's not the technology that artists would be deployed. The solution to this problem is not doing things like adding more pages with links to the staff directors of each school, and then sending all of us an email about it, which is what happened last week in our circle in 2007. I cannot understand why, instead of building more E-CHALK content, replacing it on sites available to us, the district is not pushing hard to expand already emergent use of the tool in Google Classroom, which in addition to being a fantastic collaboration tool, does have learning management system, and can thus report out to parents, built in. Amazon's founder, Jeff Bezos, attributes Amazon's success in a simple thing, put the customer first. If this administration simply starts considering a customer first when making these technologies, it's better options. You need to start including all of your customers' points, students, staff, parents, and administration to decide what does pass forward for our technology. I look forward to seeing the discussion of the district's customer-focused technology systems and processes. Please report. Thank you.
Matthews, you had a lot of great things to say, and I have seen them in some previous emails that you sent, but noticing that you did have something that was written down and organized, it might be helpful if you also said a follow-up. Just so that we can, we don't want to miss what we would set next. Next, next on the list, we have Dr. Greitz.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a reminder, I have four kids, two in elementary school, and two in the district at Parker. Because of the importance of parental involvement, as well as the need for a unified voice, I'm requesting that parents be provided with information regarding a transition plan, as well as short-term and long-term goals for the interim principal that is assigned at Parker High. Accountability and transparency are helpful in guiding and engaging in successful change, and I want to make sure that you understand how concerned we are as parents, and how invested we are. My eighth grader said to me the other day, these things will be better by the time Isaac, his brother in second grade, gets, and I reassured him that while Parker's going through some changes, things will get better, and that administrative secrets of his parents are committed to him and every other student at Parker having a grade year. Please help me make that statement true. I want you to know that I'm determined that he will have a grade year. To that end, I cannot only have a half a current student, future students as well. That said, here are four things I'm hoping to find listening along with his or her role in our, in our terms. A curriculum audit and curriculum development that includes incorporating recommendations from prior consultants immediately for all students. Along these lines, job and budget support for teachers to include the use of more diverse teaching strategies. My recommendation here would be the word with Carol White's both mindset, or Carol Thompson, or the good reading instructions to guide the conversation. Number two, district-wide assessment literacy initiative. It's important that teachers, parents, and students have an understanding of grades and assessment practices of the district. So when we ask our kindergarten through eighth graders, how are you doing in math, or any other concept area, including physical education, they're able to provide us with not just a letter grade or direct assistive order, but be able to give us qualitative data that lets us know that they know how they're growing and developing in regards to the expectations of the teachers, managers, and their class. I can't begin to stress enough the importance of teaching our children how to engage in a fluid practice, and be more responsible and invested in their role market. I'll give you an example of games like Clash Royale, Pokemon, if your kids are playing those, I can tell you exactly what level they are and what they need to do to get to the next level. I want to see that type of excitement, engagement, enthusiasm, to find kids who wish to work. Number three, investigate the quality of substitute teachers. Given that data days occur with some regularity, I believe every six weeks, we have to make sure that we have selected the best guest teachers possible that are available to work with our students in the anticipated and unanticipated acts of their performance. My greatest concern is with guest teachers. My oldest son is frustrated by guest teachers that respond with, I have no idea, when he asks a teacher for help with content for class. He has had a substitute teacher for gym classes from the beginning of this year, and he now brings a book to gym, because he doesn't think, in the name of his words, it's not plausible for 25 kids to share one ball for 45 minutes. I agree with you. My hope would be that with the push for 21st century learning and effective, timely classroom approach, it might be considered, so that students don't miss out on any time to do their teacher's things. Number four, the last thing, is evaluate the climate at Parker from the student perspective. Last year, student findings seemed to be as nearly apparent. I'd like to see TBI's data gathered and analyzed, so that you might better answer the question I know many parents must be asking, is it working? And if it is, how well is it working? And do students feel that they go to school in a positive, respectful learning environment? Are students excited about going to school? Are they convinced they will learn something new? And is their learning voice that? And perhaps the latest five essential survey will reveal answers to those questions as well. Last two states discussed the area of supportive environment is definitely just, especially with such high response rates. So I hope we don't need some conversations about those folks. Thank you for the work you've already done, and in advance, for the work you've been doing, and share that actual potential with the next.
Thank you very much, Dr. Greitz. Again, I, I have enjoyed your emails and your sense, I find them incredibly insightful, I think you have a lot of great ideas. I encourage you to continue to send them, keep looking forward to them. Thank you. Next on the agenda?
Can we ask the rest?
I'm sorry.
Can we ask the rest?
Yes, absolutely. If you could send exactly what you have just spoken about, I think that that would be mostly all.
I will.
Thank you very much. Next, the audience comments, we have Jim Long.
Jim Long, I've been living here since, I'm a taxpayer here since 1992. I went to all the one, and one, and one thing I have to ask about is the open house that took place on September 1st. When we were here in the August meeting, Dr. Doster, you said that you and your cabinet were going to fill void for the president. And that night, I didn't see you there, or your cabinet, I wasn't aware that superintendents had cabinets, but there was nobody there. Left a person that had just recently been hired to run Left a person that had just recently been hired to run the show, and I found that very disappointing. We met with all the teachers. They are wonderful. I see some up here. They have, every teacher I met, they're wonderful, but I really think that there is a lack of leadership over there. So if you could answer why you or nobody in your cabinet is there for open house, especially for the six workers.
Sure, we had our special manager for special services up there. I was out on the middle of the week that week. So Ms. Blackman was there along with the principal, and we had our teams there, our case rooms.
It would be nice if you were to point it out to us, especially since there was a little bit of a lack of communication.
Right, well, they spoke in front of everyone for all three grade levels.
And I loved what you said because I think with some of your plus, you should teach the parents. E-CHALK, Skyword, now we have to master Google Classroom? Is that the latest one that we have to master? I mean, I can't figure it out, and it's just too complicated. I really think that that has to be fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Lons, I appreciate your comments. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, next on the audience comments, we have John Banish from Page Boston. Mr. Banish.
Good evening. I just want to give a very brief update. I know time is essential this evening, but it's just, it's nice to be back here in Flosso, Illinois, Paige Lula, a local student that grew up in Flosso as a child, so it's nice to be back. As we settle into the school year, consistency again is the key of the times, the bus, the route changes and things like that. So we've had a lot of changes at the beginning of the school year, and we've had a lot of time changes and route changes. So hopefully by now, things are getting into more of a regular pace. I'm going to stay after outside pool here if anybody has any specific questions, because I don't want to take too much of your time. I think right now, probably where we're at, is probably I'll give ourselves maybe a grade of a C+. We've had a few breakdowns, too many, a couple lapses in judgment as far as routes and pick-up times and pick-up places, but we're getting that corrected. And so I know there's been a lot of parents that have been a little late to school. For that, apologize and appreciate your patience, and we will see the ongoing weeks with more consistency and with the drivers, with the times, and of course, with safety is the biggest thing. So again, John Banish Jr., thank you for having me. I'm outside the back door here. If anybody has any suggestions or anything I can do to make your day better, our job is to get the students to school quickly and on time, and if I can help you in any way, just let me know. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you coming here, but I have a question or a Vegas issue with the board. Could Mr. Banish be here to answer questions? That's great, but this shouldn't be it, public comment section, I should be on the agenda. Now, parents who were upset about school bus issues had absolutely no idea that he's here today. Not a clue. I suspect the people sitting in this audience probably aren't the people who had to work late because of school bus issues, because those people are busy and they're not going to come here unless they know there's a specific reason to come. And so I appreciate you coming tonight, but I would refer to the school board, I actually should have been on the agenda, that I knew he was coming, there's no reason for not to have been on the agenda. But since he is here, if he's got time, I would ask you to put it on the agenda for the next year and allow so that people know they can come to school.
Mr. Banish, would you be able to back in two weeks and answer questions?
Sure, I have to. Great. Again, I'll be right outside here if anybody has anything specific I don't want to overly bring up. Thank you for having me.
Okay, next on the audience comments, we have Michelle Nelson.
Hi, Red. Thanks for taking our comments tonight. And you know, I'm the mother of four children in the district, first grade, eighth grade, and I'm one of three founders of HF Robotics Club. We founded HF Robotics to teach STEM computer programming and robotics to our children because of the lack of STEM programming and assist programming in this district, the disappearance of the science fair, and the lack of courage. And just as an aside, we're now starting our fifth year with teachers telling me they're just ruining it when it comes to the curriculum in my children's classrooms. This is highly disappointing because that process was supposed to be done two years ago, and that's a long time ago.
Can you repeat that please? I couldn't hear you.
The process of the curriculum not being finished, or what exactly? We're starting the fifth year of teachers telling me that they're ruining the technical in classrooms.
Fifth year of teachers telling you there's no curriculum?
Correct, that they're ruining it.
Thank you.
So anyway, I wanted to thank you for all the replies by invitation last night. We had a kickoff for our group of older kids in HF Robotics. These kids are from Parker Junior High School and HF High School. They're a very diverse group of children. The majority of the team actually being grown, which is very unusual to see a very equal service. So thank you to those of you who replied, I appreciate it. We get about 40 people from sort of get off the bed, that included Mayor Colville from Homewood, Mayor Vaughn from Fosso, operations manager for Snyder Life and a very large departmental high director, also three teachers named at the invitation of their students from Parker Junior High School, and one teacher from HF High School, so that was really great to see. HF Robotics doesn't just teach kids from Parker Junior High and HF High School, we also have about 25 other children from seven area schools and the University of Chicago last school. So it's a very impressive and diverse group of children. And I would just invite you to come to a future event if you have any time or interest for your kids. We'd love to show you what we're doing and leave you feedback. Also, I'll give one more plug, we're looking for four to five laptop computers that this user program. Knowing that most of the kids are from 161, if you've got any ideas for how we can get a load of four to five laptop computers, we maybe work out some kind of rules or they are used on laptops. Data used.
Do they have to be power laptop? They have to be CAD tape?
You know what? If you actually consent, not to get off topic, if you consent with more respect than like me.
If the audience, if anybody in the audience who is interested that has a source of laptops, we would love to have them and just love to use them for their project. The second item I wanted to talk about was quick, was the Homewood Science Center. I'm a boarder representative for them, and two weeks ago, we hosted our first-ever South Suburban Center event. And there were 150 people who showed up for the event, and it worked with the evidence to connect local scientists, engineers, teachers, administrators with the STEM community, within the STEM community. We get to talk and collaborate. So 150 people from our program, that's very impressive. Bon Nansville from HF High School was there, Lawrence Cook, he was a partner in the medical at HF was there, Lynn Scanlon, the new faculty chair, and was there, as well as Nancy Dix in the science department chair. From Homewood School District, we had Nancy Scannion, the director of curriculum. We had Scott Calister, the principal, Jane Clark, Mary Ann Savage at Willow, at Willow School, the principal of Willow, as well as about a dozen teachers from Homewood School District. We also had Steve Torrelo, the principal at Mary Catholic, Mike Jones, the event at Mary Catholic as well. And then we had a whole slew of business leaders and industry leaders, scientists, all with an interest and passion for STEM. So it was really great to see. But the one thing that was missing was leadership from 161. I am proud to be from Fosso. I love this neighborhood. I want to see STEM programming embraced and supported by our administration because I think it's critical for our growth and development, and not only as a district, but also as a community. I see where we missed the building of paths. John List had a venture dollar, a million dollars on research projects that HF had to work with the district on, HF Robotics, asked for a larger partnership and to be able to promote our group last spring, and we put on a backpack, and so we even actually sent them a flyer. The backpack was very passive and a non-very technical way of working for organization, as Michael said. And also Fosso Baseball had an issue with being promoted by the district. So anyway, I want our students to get involved and play an active role in the Homewood Science Center, the purpose of mentioning our children and dads and mothers for the community, and I really appreciate the administration, which do more involved in the way.
Thank you, Mrs. Nelson. Certainly, I am second to none in my admiration for what you've done in the community with Robotics, and we look forward to more ways that we can support being part of that something that we truly believe in.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Amy Pinkox. Amy, I see that you have a broader of teachers. I would encourage as much as possible, if there are needs you're thinking of, if you could talk about the agenda. Generally, I only say this because in the past, you know, with parents who have, they had specific teachers they wanted to talk about, so I just wanted to help.
I'm sorry, I need to.
No, no, this is a general caution.
I apologize, I know. I'm here to talk about teachers' contracts and how our teachers, as far as I know at this point, are working without a contract in this little district. I have to go forthgoing at this point to fix that issue. Certainly, we need our teachers right now. If we go into a strike because our teachers are working without a contract, I was here about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and we were very concerned, the board was very concerned about the appearance that in the Fosso Board, School District 161, if we go into a strike situation and our teachers are working without a contract for much longer, then our parents, on top of everything else we're going through in School District 161, will be in a strike. I think that we need to solve that situation as soon as possible. I understand that we do have 30% budget in our budget at this point for our teachers. I saw a slight bump increase in benefits. I'm assuming that we're at the point that we're ready to solve our issue with our teachers. We need our teachers, we need our support staff. We're only as good as our teachers, our administrators behind us, and our support staff in the district. I hope that the board will solve the situation as soon as possible.
Mrs. Cox, thank you very much, I appreciate you. And we are in negotiations here, and as a teacher, I'm second to none in appreciation for teachers, and that certainly we will.
No, I was here, I was here at the same situation, in the same position of our core of life here, so. We got right here at the doorstep of having a strike in School District 161. I hope that we don't have to do that again. We certainly can afford to pay our teachers. We pay anyone else in this district. We spend enough money on everything else in this district. We have surplus in this district. We can't afford to pay our teachers, we can't afford to pay our support staff. Maybe we need to cut back on all the frivolous things that we spend money on, like technology out of the game, which is stacked up everywhere. Maybe we need to stop all the technology that we don't use, and we're utilizing something that's really something we don't need, not other than. So let's pay our teachers, let's support them, let's let them know that we do support them.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kristin Traven.
All right, good evening, everyone. I really don't like speaking publicly in the morning like this, but I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for bringing that. I looked up about the state and I didn't even know, I just thought that I was a couple years ago. So I hope our teachers can always support them, and I appreciate you sharing this. So I did want to start first by telling you, I went to Parker's open house also, and I was thoroughly impressed. My son's an eighth grader there, with every teacher, even more than us when I had. They were wonderful. They, we had parents leaving our room saying, "I wish I could come to your class." So I am thrilled to be in this eighth grade team this year. I did see Mrs. Blackman there at the end, but I know she's new to our district too, so you know, that was concerning, that somebody who hasn't been here before, maybe, you know, it's hard for the new administration to be put in that position, but they did a great job. So I guess my question tonight is, I do need to, I do need to reiterate my concern with the lack of communication with Parker families regarding the way that administrations since the first day of school. I checked the website, like what's suggested from a letter. I don't know what the plan is, and I would think that there has to be a protocol in situations like these, and that's one of my questions, is we just went through with that new assistant principles, that had been unexpected. What is the protocol when we're hiring a situation such as this? I'm hoping that since we've known for the last few weeks, I've been thinking, the board and superintendents have known for months about this situation, that a committee could have been formed if it hasn't, of teachers, of other administration within the building of community members. We've had quite a while, even though it seems like it to me, and they've seen when things were dated, that we've had quite a while to be working on this. I just hope that when you go into the safety of the time of the moment tonight, that's considered, that if there has been a committee, wonderful, to get other people's input, but if we're relying just on a short term or a quick look for an interim, to be concerned about that, I think we really do need, as many of you mentioned tonight, strong administration in that building. And this has been going on since day one of school, and we're into September now. I guess it's just, I wanted to voice my concern, to think carefully and to hopefully have a very strong person who's familiar with our community, familiar with our district, and who can lead those teachers so things don't change, because we all know, everyone, teachers are excellent. If you get stuff that day, it's concerning that it hasn't been addressed till now, and I just hope we can have somebody from the ULC to do a very strong job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, we have Jim Hughes.
Good evening. My name is Jim Viscillus. I am a former board member on this one. I would like to touch on how we're worried about evaluating how we're doing in the district, and specifically taking a look at N W E A data that has been produced, I think twice a year, spring and fall, and how that's presented, and what conclusions in front of we can draw from. So originally, I took a look on the website, discovered that the data was wrong. Specifically, there were routing issues with some of the scores, and reading norms were used for math rather than math norms. So both of these factors tended to inflate how well, at least visually, how well we're doing. So that presumably hasn't been fixed, and in fact, it hasn't been fixed, and I took a look at it before I came. So I just wanted briefly to touch on how the data is presented now. And I concluded that at worst, the data presented on the website is misleading, and at best, it's just not useful at all. And I would defy anybody to go onto the website, go on, I can't remember exactly, it's data something, data dashboard, I defy anybody to go on the data dashboard, go into the data and tell me if it makes any sense whatsoever. I mean, I can't make sense of it. So what does it show? It shows columns and numbers, which are our, there are numbers, our student achievement numbers by grade, and there's a little squiggly line that kind of goes to the top of these columns, which is the norm data for N W E A. Looking at these graphs, there's no numbers ever visible. In fact, if you want to find In fact, if you want to find out what the underlying data is, you actually have to put it to the mouse side, and it'll appear. So there's no, there's no qualitative or quantitative evidence whatsoever for how much better or how much worse we're doing relative to the national norms that N W E A standards. None, zero. There's no standard deviations. You can even, you can gin out of those numbers and try to guess how well we're doing in terms of percentiles. So finally, the data is not scaled accurate. So for example, I can't remember, let's say math, 2015 norms. The lowest number on the, on the graph might be 150, and the column starts at zero. So you have this, I said, this little squiggly line going over the tops of these columns, and because it's not scaled appropriately, you can't really make any judgment whatsoever, other than visually what it looks like, is that, I think the optics are that it looks like we're doing much better than it does. So again, that's my personal opinion. I would recommend people take a look and tell me what they. So the push that I draw from that is that if we agree that the N W E data is important, and I think it's important, this gentleman made an excellent presentation on that technology, how are we doing with regards to technology? Is technology adding value to this district? How are we going to measure that? Well, certainly one would be measured by looking at student achievement. Okay, and what I'm suggesting is, what we should do is we should be taking a look at the data, get it correct, we should analyze it, see where we're at, and then identify those areas where we need to improve. And I'm not at all convinced that we know where we're at in terms of how we're looking with regards to N W E A. Dr. Dos, you're kind enough to send me these reports that are requested regarding N W E student achievement numbers. Unfortunately, what you gave me was school norm numbers, which is not what I wanted, not what I requested. I asked for student achievement numbers. And the issue when you look at that optically again, is that the school norms, the school norm data, if you look at percentiles, is 15 to 20 percentage points higher. So visually again, it just kind of, it looks like we're doing much better than we are. If you look at student achievement percentiles, I actually had to look up through the 450-page explanation methodology of N W E A and pick out the numbers, and I'm not saying we're doing bad or good. What I am saying is that I can't figure out where we're at, and I spent quite a bit of time looking at it. I'm not convinced anybody in the administration knows where we're at, yes.
Mr. Giselson, I really appreciate what you have to say, and I absolutely agree that numbers are very, very important in maintaining, being accurate, in time we have the context. We are, at five, in Mark for the comments. So at this time, if you have a wrap up comment.
Yes, I do. Finally, I was very disappointed to read you follow. Very disappointed. This is a communicate which came out from the classroom district, from under superintendent's name. It says, "During the last couple of weeks, one thing we've done in conjunction with the I Point website updates and upgrades, an evolutionary process that continues is to review the data that exists on the site. We have discovered some errors that inadvertently included in some of N W E A test score information posted on the damn nation's dashboard for both reading, reading and handling." Now, that is just nonsense. That is a false statement. It is demonstrably false. I found out about this five weeks ago in this email exchange with Cameron Lus. I was up here one month detailing why the data is incorrect. So for you to say that you have discovered through this evolutionary process that the data is incorrect is, is a lie. And I would, I would hope going forward, that you can do that.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, I can say the agenda items. We have several meeting minutes, we have gifts, and we have approval of the crisis plan, as well as approval of application for recognition of schools, approval of, I'm sorry, did I say this? Yes.
Are we moving, simply written as a quote?
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. You know, we actually ran that off. We got lost. There were a lot of audience comments, I know, obscured by the step. Here is the next report, Dr. Duster.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Graydon, will you pull up the dashboard, please, for enrollment? Enrollment register? All right, so these are the best numbers that we have as of right now, but if you look at the bottom, the classes are filling in nicely, and there's still more children that are coming in, but we have 2,0287 students as of 9/12/16 last year. It's an increase over last year of about nine more. So our numbers should be, become more solid in about two to three weeks. At our next month, we'll see where our, any questions on that?
I would turn that, maybe, I, if we're watching, and then the question is, turn down.
Yeah, we're watching. As soon, as soon as they get to 25, then we're.
So that would be that, what's your name who has, Klein, Marchville, Reston, Hoyt, Paul, Moses, Wallace, Paul, or Tony, God?
So another student would come in, that's children would go to screen. All right, next on the agenda is those who excel banquet. The banquet will be taking place, will be honoring some of our staff and group committee members. If anyone is interested in going, please let us know by, I think it's the 15th of September, that Friday. If you like Kathy, I know, I greatly appreciate it. In addition to that, number three, we'd like to invite the board to the South Football Dinner. It's on 10/26. If you're interested in attending that, let Kathy and I know, so that we can get everyone signed up. If we could have your information if you're interested by Friday, but this week, that would be wonderful. Any questions on that? Number four, I want to talk about this dashboard that Mr. Giselson had brought up earlier. All right, real quick, so with our strategic plan, we have a dashboard. The dashboard is basically, just shows a quick glimpse of what we're doing in the school district, and it is something for people to go to and to look at. So let's go all the way to the top, if you would, of this dashboard, so everybody's familiar with it. So after our strategic plan, we have our focus areas. Student achievement, curriculum assessment, culture and climate, professional resources, and finance. So we also have our vision statement, our mission statement out there. So what did we do? We asked, how can we show the community what we are doing? Something simple, so they can get a quick view of this information. You could go up a little bit in this round. Or down, sorry. Okay, so right here, this part, we have these bar graphs here. These bars were made by us, by the school district. Our technology director, we asked him to put information in there from our curriculum department, and the information that we put in there, we're just in store to show where people are. Now, when we have our scores right here, that takes care of 2012, 13, 14, 14, 15, and then these scores down here are last year's scores. This up here is the norm. This norm is what N W A has predicted for us. So the norm changes every five years. This norm, right here, has changed. That is the new norm down here. So there was a letter, there's a communication, it was sent out through my office last week. We have been doing some scrubbing of our tech, of our webpages, we're looking at that, but we did make a mistake. We made a mistake on our math norm. And on our math norm, it was, it was put in our reading norm. So our reading norm and our math norm were exactly the same. So with that, our scores right here of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're a little bit below that norm for that year. What our teachers do, and we're extremely hard, we have data retreats. We have those two times a year. We have data analysis, that takes place three times a year. We have three building meetings where they report out to myself and my cabinet. We are doing a lot. They have the P L C Vs, et cetera. We take this data, and with this data, we try to grow with that. These norms here, we are, we're doing what we need to do. Every one of these math or exceeded, and I know it's not good on here, but it doesn't look good on here, but every category, every grade level, we met or exceeded, except for sixth grade math, and we were shy 1.1 point on the math. And we're working on that. Our teachers know it is. We have a school improvement plans, which will be presented in two weeks at our next meeting, so that we can assist with the continuous improvement process in our education. In addition to that, our staff, these are numbers in this school to go by, but each student in front of our, our staff, they look at them individually to see what they can do and how they can help them. So this right here, I'm going to keep that up there in the dashboard, but what I'm also going to do is I'm going to put on the N W A reports, one for each one of those grade levels, I'll have to see how we'll do that, I got to talk to my curriculum department. We're going to make a link to that, so you know exactly what it states. So we're trying to be open and transparent with the dashboard, give some information to the community to see where we're at. If we, if there's angst in the community about this, I apologize to all of you. What I'm trying to do is show you how we're doing with this.
Yes.
Can I ask you a quick question? Those numbers up there are those means, are our results, does it mean?
This means.
Because you have a single bar representing all the student population with a single bar.
Right, that is a mean.
Okay, so half the students did worse. How much worse did they do? Half the students did better. How much better did they do? We need to see distributions up there. We need to see the kids that are struggling, and how many of them there are, and the kids that are really succeeding, and just how many of those there are. That is hard to, it's marketing mumbo jumbo, it doesn't mean anything.
Mark, in addition to that, Jim had mentioned our scales, that's something that we can probably improve on too. Because when you look at that, it goes zero all the way up to what, 150, 100 or 100.
Why does it even go down to zero? There's no such thing, I mean, there's not even a score below 100 on the math test, as far as I know. I mean, look, this is marketing garbage. This is, you guys stretched the scales out to make it hard to see that we're falling below the line. You don't, you get wrong reports from N W E A, you get charged from N W E A. You've been fighting with me to, to now not let anyone in the public see those, where you've been putting fake data on the website. Why would you stretch the scale down to zero? That's not meaningful. Tell me what the meaning of that bar is, that all 100 means. What meaning does that bar have?
The zero is a starting point. Number one, we're not, we're not.
There's no such thing as zero. Please, please, don't finish.
We're not hiding anything from you. Okay, the information you're asking for is personal information on students.
Okay. You want, you want to have a public debate about that right now? Just walk back off.
So as we move on, if we will continue.
No, I, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm not going to let someone stand here and why? The data I've asked for is not private student information.
Mr. Nelson, if you have, if you let Mr. Duster finish, okay?
I thought he was done.
Well, if you finish, we go all the way through. If you have a comment for you to make, that's fine, but let's stay forward.
So in addition to that, if you go up, or down, excuse me, more, we have the only way to score a court card link on there, which we have to have, and I will have the links put on there in regards to N W A, we'll, we'll talk about that, put that on. In addition, curriculum assessment, we talked about the things that we've done. If you'll go down more, please. Climate and culture, we have information out there as far as the communication, communicating out. Professional resources, these are all, everything that we offer the community, and are all our stakeholders as far as bringing people into the schools. And then our finance, we have some information here from our forecast five, showing where we are as far as the school district. So the dashboard is simply something of that nature, and what I want to do now is I want to go back, Kathy, to the links. 13 school year of grade three, there was a score posted of two point, or 203.6. The correct score should have been 203.5. For fifth grade, it's 216, it should have been 216.4. So you can see the rounding errors that took place on that part. If you could go down a little bit more, please. These norms here were posted, there were no decimal points on that chart. You can see the correct norms that are located here. In addition, there was a mistake right here, and that should have been less than that, but you can see they didn't double there. Next, one is our math, and you can see what happened, these are the same as our reading norms. So these were changed, and then in addition to that, our N W A scores also had exact decimal points with them. So that is what, that's what happened, it was an honest mistake, and it was information we're just trying to give, give to the community. Any questions, board?
So I'm assuming, I mean, this quick overview of the quick changes that have been made in the dashboard does not do justice to the discussion that we really need to have around the data. So I'm assuming that the cows, people have more of a robust discussion about what all of this really means. I mean, I agree with many of the comments that were made about, when I look at these, visually, yes, they look like we are doing okay as a district, but unless like we actually see real distribution, unless there's real spioing that makes sense, I mean, we're far enough to be able to figure out what a real bar chart should look like. So I want to know when can we plan on having a more robust discussions about the data, really very honest, candid conversation about where the gaps are, where the challenges are, what the plan will be, and maybe that will come with the S I P presentations in a couple of weeks. But it's important for me to say, I mean, and I have looked at all of the information that has been sent to me, and I feel like we need to have a bigger discussion around what the data mean, impact, and I think as a board needs to have it, but I feel like we also owe it to the community. So I'd like to know when can we expect to have that deeper conversation about what the heck does the data really, really mean, and how we plan to respond to it here?
What we'll do in the next two weeks, we'll have our S I P plans, they will be presented. But I think what we are asking for is more of a workshop, type of activity, permanent discussion, and that will be session, and the community, their community as well, that's something that we'll have to discuss and talk about.
So will the S I P, so have the S I P templates changed at all? Because there'd be, you know, last year I had questions about some of the, some of the stuff that was included, some schools include some data, some don't, some show it differently. I mean, I want the conversation in two weeks around S I Ps to be meaningful, and I want to walk away having a very clear understanding of where, where are we. I'm not afraid to hear Partridge in trouble. I'm not afraid to hear Park was in trouble, this school's in trouble, our district is in trouble. I'm not afraid to hear that, but I need to hear it. I don't want it sugarcoated, I want to have a very candid conversation about it. So, whether that's in two weeks, whether there is a second, but it can't be three months from now. We, we have the data for quite a long time. I know you guys all know it intimately, but we don't know it that way.
If I might, I think that what you're describing is something that is probably beyond one agenda item. And that probably, again, this is something we can discuss. But, yeah, well, I think we need to look at what a workshop is. For a lot of people, frankly, just a straight overview of what this means would be immensely helpful. I know that, you know, these numbers are sometimes intimidating. You know, the, the, you know, what a RIT score is, is this, you know, it's like a widget. What do you, what is that, for most people? And if you're not familiar with, with this, it's, I think it's daunting and overwhelming. And I think our goal is always to make things as apparent as possible, so that, so that the questions are always, they're less based on what does this mean in terms of definition, and in more terms of what does it mean in terms of innovation. And so I think if we're going to do a workshop, that we need to really look at what that is. But I think step one would be, we really do have to have some sort of overview for parents looking at this, with how this relates to students, how this relates to teachers, and how they all fit together.
Well, and I was just suggesting, I've sat on some of those workshops, workshops in our district and in other districts, and that's all helpful to know, but bottom line, like, when I go in and sit with my son's teacher, and she tells me what his RIT is and what, and what his goals are, that's helpful to me, and I trust her or him. I guess what I'm trusting you guys is, is that, just let us know, like, what can we do as parents in a district? Are these good, are they not good? Where do we need to improve? What can we support them in doing? That's what I want to know as a parent. I mean, we can all hear the numbers and the RIT scores and all that, but what do we need to make, what do we need to do to make sure we're meeting if we're not, and exceeding those expectations? That's what I'd like to hear.
You take your notes.
Do you have another comment?
Yes.
Also, I just wanted to understand, so the, the norm line on that, is that the goal? Like, is that just an average? Because to me, that, that reads kind of average. And is that really what our sights are on, right? To just barely get to, to that? Like, what are we doing to be, with all the resources that we have, with the community that we have? I frankly expect a whole heck of a lot better than just that. And I mean, I just, I ask that legitimately, like, is that norm just in kind of a eh? Or is that really something we should be proud of achieving? I'm getting the sense, not so much.
I think that, if I may, just address this really quick, because in general terms, I had a conversation in the beginning last night regarding this, where, you know, your RIT score or your math score, it's, it's a test that should illuminate not support. You know, as a matter of fact, there's an argument, or a comment that Winston Churchill made, that his opponent is using stats like, you know, drawing pieces of land posts. You know, it's really meant to eliminate, but he was trying to support. And it's, as, it's meant to give us an idea of where we are and what we need to do. And so when we look at norms in terms of, you know, a teacher, what we're looking at is typically, where do other students across the country, where do they fall into this norm in 2015? And that gives us an idea of where we need to shift focus for instruction and emphasis on support. And it's, it's meant, it's really meant to give guidance as opposed to say, okay, it's needed, you know, we're here. A couple of years ago, there was a big putback, we're implementing, you know, type one assessments as a measure of school achievement. You know, NWA came out, NWA came out and said, in response to the city of Portland, using 50% of their teacher evaluation as, you know, how they did on the math test is, this is, we do not espouse this, this is not meant as a teacher evaluation tool. This is really meant to give the district an idea of where their kids are. And, you know, to the point, it was made about, you know, looking at the need as opposed to, you know, a more complex picture of the data. You know, we're not dying by this, we're living by this. And to live by this, we really need to understand what it's actually telling us and how it's, exactly to the point of how we need to support.
But, I mean, I get, but you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I definitely...
Like, we're trying to get to a target, right? And you have the capacity, like, we're driving, you know, a Maserati, right? And we're just idling at, you know, 30 miles, or, or like 30 miles an hour. This car has the ability to go, you know, 150 miles an hour. Why are we setting our bar so low? What's that, who, how, what is our expectation within the district of what we can achieve? And additionally, for, if there are specific areas, to your point, if there are specific schools, or grades, or parts of community, or whatever, that aren't achieving it, if we don't see it, we can't help it, right? I mean, if there's a specific school that may be struggling, I don't know, man, I don't know enough about it, if it's a specific school that's struggling, or what have you, I am sure that this community would step up and help support that, right? Like, just because average and okay for me personally is, is not what I'm, I'm striving for. And I don't think that, as, as in general, that that's what this community is striving for.
I agree with you. I would say that we'll talk about that in greater detail at the, at the SIP.
I just had a follow-up comment. You had stated that we did not need to get involved in the data analysis. I think some of us are very competent in data analysis, and we want to see true statistics. And we don't, and we don't actually want to see unrefined pictures. That I can't even, from back here, it was just a loss, totally. And it's very similar on a computer. So, I had a question of, is, because I've new to this, I've never used it before me, but is raw data not available? The identified raw data?
Could you discuss with me?
Civil back-up. Is, can I not ask a question?
There is, we're only writing it down just so we can...
Your thought of raw data, it's not a question.
Should we read the data, sir? If not, I want you to see it. It is all...
Mr. Nelson, thank you, I appreciate that. But to answer your question, excuse me, I'm sorry, I got mildly distracted. Could you please repeat the question?
Might I bring my ear in a question? A civil back-up, and I just wondered why the raw data, the identified raw data is not available for us to now limit and analyze in our, in scientific data?
We provide a raw data, yes.
Oh, I think, so I think...
We have raw data. Is that what we gave you? Did we give that to you, for raw data?
You have not given me adequate raw data, and that's why you are under arrest. But you're...
Okay, let's, thank you, let's, so to answer your question, yes, we do have raw data available. You will come back to the request. Yes.
What we really need to keep our eye on, and we exactly tell, tell to what you're asking, Mrs. Horr, is we need to look at the students' conditional growth data. Because while you can put a bar graph up there, and it looks all nice and pretty compared to national norms, we are not growing our children. The rate for the sixth grade growth last year was 35% against everybody else in the nation. We are not growing the children. And that's where all of us are, we are worried for our kids. I'm worried for not only my two that go to Park Room, my little one at Western, I'm worried for the kids at Serena, et cetera, because what concerns me the most is the out-of-the-gate presentation that we saw at the first board meeting in September was on gifted. Shame on you all. When you've got Park data presented that's 28%, shame on you. You worry about that other 67%, and I'm gonna keep coming, and I'm gonna keep talking about the 67%. Nobody's looking at them. And their moms and dads aren't here talking for them, so I am, as a public educator who's been in it for 25 years and takes your job super seriously, I'm gonna keep coming, and I'm gonna keep squawking for them, because they have no voice, and they're, nobody's looking at them right now. We're, we're status quo. Unless Cameron had asked for all this stuff, I would have been lulled in complacency because everything's going okay. My kids are okay. But what's happening is, you guys all see what's happening to our home values. We're not, I can get out of my house now if I wanted to. I'm gonna get carried out of that thing in a hefty bag. Because what's happening to our schools, what has happened in the 14 years since I've lived here? I picked this district precisely. I moved from Orla Park where the schools are still great, and I came here for my kids. And you're letting them down. You're letting the other 60, whatever percent down. Cracking that strategic plan, there's nothing about those kids. It's all about PTA, and PTO meetings, and climate, and culture, and that's not our worry. Our worry is those kids who aren't achieving the, the other, you know, 65% of the sixth graders who didn't meet their conditional growth.
Mrs. Rick, thank you so much, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
At this time, Mr. Nelson?
As a matter of fact, I had a chance to address a lie. I mean, you're superintendent, get up there and lie, and I'd like a chance to respond to it. He carried the rights, and I did.
Mr. Nelson, I encourage you, if you would like to send your superintendent and the board...
I want them to hear. This is a public meeting.
It's not a public meeting. This is a meeting as a public.
Yeah, well, so you're lying to the public, I might respond to the public.
Mr. Nelson, you invited to come. Every single time, I enjoy your unexpected, but at this time, you're only on some text. Thank you. Next on the agenda item, we have, is the consent agenda? We have several items, we have...
And our players would be, would we go back and double check if, um, you were to go back and double check with the president?
No, Mrs. Mart, no, it is not on the agenda, I'm sorry. You're out of order. Next on the agenda, I, no, you're out of order, I'm sorry. You should have asked it before you got to the meeting, or you could ask it afterwards. You're out of order again. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, is consent. We have several items. Mrs. Mart, we are not here to want personal attacks against people who cast shade. No, you are out of line. You have been spoken to this on a number of occasions, and I'm sorry. People have been very polite with you for 11 years. Thank you.
Okay, that's a personal attack.
I apologize. Next on the agenda.
$2,000, taxpayer money.
Next on the agenda, there's several consent agenda items, first being approval of this. Next, also being gifts. Next being approval of crisis plan. We have approval of the application for education schools. We have approval of administrative and teacher salary benefits. We have speed lease classrooms. We have employer requests. Before we get to some of the other items, I would like to look at some of the gifts that were donated, because they were very generous. I want to look at these directly. Debbie Myers donation of $25,000. Office Max School Supplies donation of $350. Allison Wild Indoor Recession Equipment Materials and Supplies, $976.48. Allison Wild Outdoor Recession Equipment, $920.49. Allison Wild, $974.59, drones on the ride, pedometers, and recess equipment. Professor, do you want to elaborate on the...
Yeah, I appreciate all of that. Allison Wild is one of our teachers, as you can see, that was brought along, wanting to spend... Appreciate it. Miss Bostrom? Yeah, four flowers for her, yes, yeah.
I just wanted to bring out the fact that Myers donation was specifically to help with STEM programs. The $25,000.
What programs will that go to then?
Excuse me?
What programs?
Yet to be determined. We are working on that this year. And this is, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry. If I'm not mistaken, on this level, this is, $25,000 is not factored into the current budget, but it is something that we are, we're looking at allocating to the most productive places.
Was that a full grant, what, or just a kid?
It was a donation.
Yes.
Was that their original donation, or is this a second donation?
No, it was their original donation.
The 25 was their original, okay.
We'll bring it through here.
Okay, thanks.
If you need any, want any help from parents who love them, we are happy to help them. By some, by some program.
What we say in every committee, the show, and the...
So, at this time, I would like to adjutant motion to accept, Jim? If you have to leave until this process of motion, and if you have any questions? Is everybody okay with that?
I didn't hear, I need, we need to hold the minutes from August 20th. I mean, some of the laws, monitoring, you have relations with...
Yes, so I have, we adjutant motion. We will have first and second, and then at that point, we will have an opportunity for comments, discussion, some kind of a chance, some kind of...
Can I have a question? You guys have a, these employer requests that are being sent in, and I'm not very willing to vote in dispute. The employer is certifying the superintendent's response to those employer requests, and what's the purpose of tagging them on being sent in?
Employer requests that are requested of the school district and be approved. So they go through this process.
So each board member will be voting to approve your responses that are under investigation by the regional council.
Board will be approving the request that is...
I just wanted to make sure they understand they're gonna be looking at what you've done.
We are, hold on a second, Nelson, we are approving the request itself, we're not approving the...
Cancel the request, it's my request, I'm gonna send you the request.
Okay.
I would like to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the August 20th, 2016 committee of the whole, is that what you're saying? Committee of the whole, comments.
So moved to the second meeting. Second, is there a discussion or comments?
There is a discussion. I don't mind, well, she's, uh, minutes pulled as well. They're not actively reflecting what happened at the meeting. So I'm like that, discussion of the expiry invoice, most discussion of the IASD.
Okay, so then, this panel will make an amended motion?
Alex, I've had a minute before the August 16th executive session and special board meeting also. Okay, regular board meeting minutes, August 16th.
Senator, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Very difficult to hear.
Oh, I'm really sorry.
I appreciate being here, it's wonderful. I want to get a copy of this motion. Would it be possible to advise everybody next time?
You know what, we have them, for some reason, they don't seem to be working, so...
Have we turned the year on?
It is quite, truly here.
Tony, there's a fan inside of there. Switch, can I, you want to get in, you want to do it to the side of the switch? Looks like a light switch.
So the motion on the floor is to accept the consent, the consent agenda items as presented with removal of regular board of education minutes from August 16th, 2016, as well as committee of the whole meeting August 29th, 2016. Do we have any, so, first, okay. Okay, so, um, a ready discussion, questions or comments as well?
I have a question, so, is there, are issues that people have, minutes, how are those issues discussed and?
They immediately become, things that are discussed individually as information action items. That's individualized, I'm sorry. And then, then individually either accepted or rejected, then or comments.
And it happens in the meeting?
Yes, it does. Unless we decided to table it for next meeting, if we didn't come to an agreement, or if we all decided that we need extra time. Okay, so we have?
It was the email prior to the board meeting, thank you.
Well, I think really, it comes down to, ideally, yes. If there is anything that is up for discussion, certainly before we approve them, it counts the time to make sure that we, if there is. So with that said, can we roll call this, Sabrina?
Okay, Huckabee?
Uh, yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, the motion's passed. I will, I will entertain a motion to accept the presentation of the regular board minutes, regular Board of Education meeting minutes from August sixteenth, twenty sixteen?
It's almost.
So, second, Mrs. Harrell, are there any comments or questions?
I don't think that the board minutes from August sixteenth can reflect what happened.
Okay, I agree with you. In fact, I actually rewrote that one part, as I think reflects the section in the videotape. So if you don't mind, if I read part B, and if you want to add to that, that's fine. Okay, so I have a consent agenda item B, says several members compared this presentation to the presentation of board approved, when seeking an insult to the citizens of the district their strategic plan, however was pointed out by an unenoversement that the difference with the HYA presentation was that the board, the board president, you seek out this presentation. It says, "Board President suggested seeking counsel of the district attorney to advise the board regarding the direction they should go regarding this matter." This is not true, or accurate, rather. The board president, myself, said that I, said that he, in the meeting, spoke to the district attorney on this matter, and said that if we keep hearing from them, that we should let them know, and that he would speak to them. Okay? I did not suggest that counsel of the district's attorney was advised regarding the direction they should go regarding this matter. It says, "Several board members," it does not say how many, "cheer their position, and they are disputing the bill due to the absence of contract." Okay, they also made it clear that the presenters, Mrs. Holic specifically indicated that her presentation did not presume that they would be hired as a search firm. Board President, myself, was asked to provide the parent board with copies of the course files sent to HYA. Dr. Duster was, as far as I'm aware, directed to contact Dr. Mary, Dr. Pamela Holic from Echard Group to HYA to seek additional clarification. This is not accurate. Dr. Duster was directed to let Pam Holic know that the board did not recognize her invoice as valid, and that it would not be paid. Okay, and I have referenced received August sixteenth, twenty sixteen meetings, videos starting at thirty-eight minutes, onto the next agenda item.
No, I was directed to let her know that I'm not going to pay the bill, and in the discussion that took place, there wanted to be more clarification on that. So that's.
That is not my recollection, that is not the video.
That's what we saw from the video, we watched that several times to make sure that that was right. So my job, I believe, was to give clarification on that.
What did the video say?
The video said that.
We're not paying it at this time.
Period.
Wasn't.
That's the direction, period, we're not paying it. And that reason why you were to.
To notify them that we are not having professional courtesy, that we would not want to pay. If there was no clarification involved in that process, I know we had, we had discussions going back in court about being speaking in our name, but as a professional courtesy, we were to, we were to let them know that we were not paying that bill. And we did not recognize the bill in any term, because we did not have a contract.
There was a question on clarification, we watched the video. So, the point is, what I need the board to do with that bill is, you need to vote if you're gonna pay it or you're not gonna pay it.
Okay, I, no, no, we had, we brought that up, we were just looking for direction. The direction at that time was clear. Okay, I think I just suggest, it's really, I don't want to spend another hour in this with the actually board, things actually do. I was gonna say, so is this everyone else's recollection as well, that we did not recognize the bill, and the direction was that we're not gonna pay as a matter of professional courtesy?
Yeah, that was my recollection. I clearly remember saying that, or agreeing that we should not pay the bill, and I think I was one of the lone voices who believed that we should actually, out of professional courtesy, actually contact HYA, because I think you'd see, very differently about that, and I think I did, making the comment of, it's just not, this is not professional.
Right, I accepted that.
So the video says something different than, than that?
I don't know, it was something to the video, and prior to, during the agenda, it was clear that everyone said to not pay the bill.
Everyone not, I mean, the majority, so it's where the law is.
There was no information, any of the contact that had been had between Mr. Frey and Mr. Holic, aside from Mr. Frey's recounting.
I think you were the only one who requested that information, and I believe you gave that to you.
And then, Mr. Dr. Duster provided us with more information from HYA, including a letter where Mr. Frey calls the proposal twice, this very specific letter, information we did not have. So, Mrs. Harrell had a lot of comments about how we were going in and not charged for a present, a sales pitch, she called it a sales pitch, Mr. Frey several times. Nowhere in any of the documentation we saw, did you ask for a gentleman pitch of the overall services offered by HYA, this very specific presentation, we did not have access to any of those materials, and now that we do, that should be discussed in the meeting, because we've got a bill that we've not voted on, not paying, it's a two thousand dollar bill that we still.
Should we go to the question, should we decide? I think it was, it was on the agenda, it doesn't, and it doesn't both the proper procedure when you're, when you're already, when you're in that direction, is not to flip it back on the agenda.
Pay personal hasn't given any information. Besides, Mr. Frey, I mean, current bill told us to not pay it, but it seems like a conflict of interest to me, that we should, in public, have all the information. And we've got an ball we should talk about.
You've got the information, we've got copies of it, and.
Well, it was on, it was on the agenda, and then we removed it from the agenda. So who removed the item from the agenda?
It wasn't properly placed on the agenda, because it's not, that is not the proper way of giving agenda.
I don't know what on the agenda, how is it present on the agenda?
It was just put there.
Doesn't Mr. Frey authorize the agenda before it's?
Yes, I did, that's why I said this is not.
So it was on the, so you pulled it off the agenda?
Dr. Duster put it on the agenda. He wrote a memo that said, "The board is asking for more clarification." I corrected him and said, "That is not what the board asks you to do, the board asks you to, as a professional courtesy, let them know that we're not gonna pay the invoice." That is what the direction was at the time. So the memo was based on information that was incorrect, so therefore, it's off the agenda. And unless three people on the board want to put it on as an agenda item, it's not going back on the agenda. And I hope that we can run for this item, so we can go back to our board work.
This is, this is board work, these are taxpayer dollars, it is incredibly troubling that you want to involve.
This is Marks.
Control of this.
This is Marks. This is Marks, we spent ample time discussing this a week before school started. This item has been spoken about, we are done. So, going back to, yes.
I just want to be clear on what we're supposed to be discussing.
Okay.
Right now, is discussing that you have changed, but I, I heard that the reflection of the minutes in regards to that was not correct, so we had some of the same thoughts. So that was why I was going to be. Is your motion there to amend, or? Yes, you have a motion, it is amended. To reflect what, so can I, should you give it there?
To reflect properly what was stated in that, we did not seek clarification as a professional courtesy. We did want to let HYA know that we did not recognize the bill, we were not taking the bill, because there was no contact.
Okay, so then, let me make a motion, or net motion, to accept the, oh, sorry, you actually had another.
I just made a motion, I'm doing a second motion.
I can do this one, clarify one thing, I, I need direct, directed, that you are not paying that bill for each way, is that correct?
That's correct. You guys are now discussing something that's not on agenda, it's a violation of community text. You have a consent agenda item, either approve or reject, don't move, approve or reject, and move on, and stop wasting our time.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded.
Okay, but there was also another amendment that you wanted to make.
Um, we were just in the discussion of the IAS, IAS, IASD invoice, and it was just the last one. Uh, it was saying, we were discussing, deciding that you were, to, to us being of this organization that the invoice was paid. Um, that wasn't totally correct, we said that we would pay the invoice, but we also did ask invoice minutes about a call, corrected, we asked about if there had been clarifications in that in regards to, did you guys seek to get this canceled? But, because it was not, I never gave it that key of not, whether you were not bottom line, and understanding that that last part just destroyed your, because that was not true.
Okay.
So the last part just destroyed, that's it.
So straight to the last sentence?
Yep.
Discuss the set to the district meeting, and the board's meeting. So then, the motion is to accept these minute, these minutes of Board of Education for August sixteenth, twenty sixteen, that reflect.
Right to the last sentence.
Discussion on IASD invoice, as well as accepting my revisions that I made. So moved.
Fourth is the second.
Second, Mrs. Harrell.
All right, hold on a second. Okay, so we're changing from Odom to Harrell, and a new motion.
I'm sorry.
Do we need a motion now?
I guess I would, I hijacked Mr. Noss. Okay.
Okay. So am I gonna go, stay with Odom and Harrell, or am I changing that?
Stay with Odom.
Okay.
Can we roll call this, Sabrina?
Okay, Harrell?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed. Um, next, I will make a motion to accept the committee of the whole meeting, August twenty ninth, twenty sixteen, as presented. Miss Harrell?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Huckabee, any discussion? Roll call this, please.
What was it for, I'm sorry?
This was for committee of the whole meeting, August twenty ninth, twenty sixteen.
And that would be the opposite of the statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Marks, let's name it. Okay, Marks, stand. Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next agenda? We have committee reports, Mrs. Huckabee? Okay, then, move that to the next meeting, committee of the whole. Okay, next, we have information action items, first being the approval of bills. This wants to be approved by Mrs. Odom.
Yes, I have a motion to approve the bill to the amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Any comments? Discussion? Mrs. Frey?
Okay. Harrell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of payroll. I will call for a motion to approve the payroll of the amount of eight hundred and fourteen dollars, I'm sorry, eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, sorry, eight hundred and fourteen thousand and seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents for the month of August, as presented. Mrs. Huckabee?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Odom, any discussion? Can we roll call Mrs. Frey?
Ford?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, approval of the fiscal year seventeen budget. I will call for a motion to adopt the FY twenty seventeen budget. The budget has been on public display as required by school code. The board held a public hearing prior to adoption of the budget. This matter was discussed at the board's twenty ninth, twenty sixteen committee of the whole meeting. Yes, okay, Mrs. Huckabee?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Odom, discussion?
Yes, as everybody in here, we will have the form, or the official form, every board member has to sign it, so that we can.
Okay, thank you. Can we roll call Mrs. Frey?
Odom?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have business items, since we don't have any new business items, we will, at this time, protective session, discuss matters relating to personnel. Five ILCS one twenty slash two, C one, IL thirteen, a motion to enter protective session. Mrs. Huckabee, checking, Mrs. Harrell, can we roll call Mrs. Frey?
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Harrell?
Yes.
Frey?
Yes, the motion is passed.